...Commission Board Meeting. Today is Thursday, March 14th, and I have 2:06 PM. Jennifer?
Thank you, since I'm subbing in for Renette, so I'm new at this. Mayor Bobst?
Here.
Mayor Brennan?
Here.
Councilperson Brown?
Michael King, here.
Mayor Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Collier? Mayor De Seko?
Here.
Mayor Gamala?
Here.
Mayor Prosek? Mayor Sellers?
Here.
Councilperson Simon? Mr. Serat?
Here.
We have a quorum, thank you.
You. So, we'll kind of jump down to item three here on the, on the agenda here. I believe the minutes are in, from our December 13th meeting, are in your packet. And if you hadn't had a chance to look over them, if you could do that, and I'll ask for a motion to accept the minutes.
So moved?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor of accepting the December 13th minutes as presented? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Stay.
One abstention from Mayor Gamala. Thank you. All right. Actually, let's just, let's go four and five, too, as well as we'll get to our, before we get to our organizational meeting. The first piece of business from the Chair's report, it's really first to welcome Mayor Gamala to the Planning Commission Board. Happy to have you onboard. Got a great group here, very committed, and something that you'll hear me say over and over again, is I think the County Planning Commission is such a great asset to this county, and honestly, I would say probably an underutilized one. So, really looking to ramp up in its presence within the community over the coming year. So, welcome. If you have any questions, comments, please feel free to reach out. Happy to help you. Welcome. The other piece of, or item I wanted to mention to you all, because I think it can be very relevant to you, is just, now, was it two weeks ago, that the Cuyahoga County Housing Program legislation was passed. So, I don't know if everyone's seen this, but it's a six-year, $30 million program that really looks to improve housing conditions within, within the county. The County Land Bank is a big partner within this. Actually, Mr. King over here was one of the authors of the legislation. The majority of the money really is a continuation of the Land Bank's current funding from DTAC. But there are some other dollars to help supplement this transition from mostly a demo focus to now more of one about rehabilitation, infill, housing, and really trying to create, bolster markets that haven't quite done so on their own. So, in addition to that, the Department of Development here at the county will be receiving a million dollars a year to focus on two things, one being home repair, and the other being low-dollar mortgages. So, this legislation was passed, but it doesn't take place, the funding doesn't come until January 1st, 2020. But I just wanted to make you all aware that, you know, we are in the kind of data gathering, getting input, and to really help define these programs. So, if you have any comments, thoughts, anyone I should talk to, please let me know about Questions? So, those are the two items I had. I will turn it over to Susan, our interim director, right now. But to talk a little bit more about the statement I made earlier about the Planning Commission, and really trying to push this work out, you know, into the public more, so that more people are aware that we are really helping and serving the municipalities as well. So, I will turn it over to Susan to talk about kind of how that happens. Susan?
Thank you, and hello, everyone. It's nice to be back, nice to chat with everybody beforehand, and I wanted to give you a report. Yes, thank you. Everybody knows Kevin Leeson, I think he's on our GIS team, and I'm very excited that we are going to be having a report later on the Cuyahoga County Greenways Plan. You'll be hearing from Michael Mears. But I wanted to give you a sense of the breadth and depth of things that we work on. About two, three weeks ago, the Office of Regional Collaboration had put on a presentation event for cities and municipal staff members to come here, to the county council chambers, and to hear from various departments in the county what services they offered. And Ken was there, and I was there, and after doing that, I thought, well, I remembered seeing Mayor Bobst in the audience, and, and probably a few other people, but I know that not everybody was probably there, so I thought, my report might, might help let you know what we do at the Planning Commission. You guys should be super proud to be on this board, because we are a great and mighty little group of consultants that do all kinds of work around the county. In some ways, I think we've got our fingers in lots of pies, but it's all good, and it's all meant to make our region a better place to live. So, one thing that people are familiar with, and let's see, are the master plans that we do. And we are working on a lot of them simultaneously right now. We are finishing up master plans in Brexville, we're making a final presentation to their steering committee, we're finishing up in Mayfield Village, we're waiting to hear from their project team what the final edits to the plan are. We did a master plan for the, for Parma, its town center, and we're waiting to hear final edits from their project team. And then also in Strongsville, we're finishing up, and we'll be making a presentation to their City Planning Commission on March 28th. So, right now, in process, we've got three master plans, one in Broadview Heights, where we are starting on current conditions of their community. Brooklyn, we had a project team meeting today, and it was the second one that we had had. And then Woodmere, we had a public meeting last week. And we are just now getting started on the city of Westlake, and our master plan there is going to be looking at alternatives for the Center Ridge Road Corridor, and the city is assembling their steering committee and project teams as we speak. So, maybe it would be helpful, since I used a little bit of terminology here, to know what the process is. People can either pay us to do planning for them, a master plan or a zoning update or whatnot, or they can apply in a grant selection process to do one of those studies. So, all of these communities actually applied to do those studies, but any one of those communities or another one can just choose to pay us. We also will do work for pay. But the process that we do is that city decides it's going to have a plan done, and then we work with them and say, well, we need to have a team, a local team, and it's usually made up of the mayor and city administration, and then we have asked them to select a steering committee made up of stakeholders in the community, superintendents, local universities, business owners, and then we work with the public in large public meetings. So, there's sort of a three-step vetting process for all of these plans, and so we always feel at the end that they've had a good hearing, and, you know, that we like to think that cities will use them and that they'll be useful for the next 10 years. And as, I think almost everyone here has gone through that process, and as you know, once you have a current master plan, you can refer to it when you ask for funding from anything mentioned in the master plan, and you can use the master plan as sort of a lever to get the funding by saying that, you know, this independent group of consultants suggests this as something that would be good for the community. So, I think that's the thing that, that everybody's most familiar about, as far as the work product of the Planning Commission. But we also do a lot of work with county departments, and, let's see, oops. One of them, we're working with the Department of Sustainability right now on their Climate Action Plan, and what we are doing to contribute to that, and it's actually still in process, it will be released in the, you know, next few months or so, but we are providing information for that plan on land use and policies that can be used to adapt to some of the effects of climate change, and also to prevent further emissions that would cause our climate to become worse. We also, in our narrative that we have delivered to the Department of Sustainability to promote transit-oriented development and anti-sprawl measures. Additionally, we have done mapping for the Climate Action Plan, and there's actually an online vulnerability assessment that people can look at for their community that looks at social factors such as age and poverty, physical factors such as whether the particular area you're looking at is in a floodplain, or its proximity to urban heat islands. All that information is being collated and put together into a countywide climate action plan. So, it hasn't been unveiled yet, but it'll be a really great document when it's finished. The other department that we're working with actively is the Department of Public Works. Interestingly, because we're, as I said, I like to refer to us as a group of consultants with a wide variety of backgrounds, but a lot of urban planners among us, and also people who have specialized expertise in the natural environment. So, you might find it hard to believe that we actually do pavement conditions ratings for the Department of Public Works. We went through, some people in our agency went through training, and we actually assist them in analyzing road conditions around the county, and we look at county roads. We did it for the first time last year, we'll be doing it again this next year, and it's actually pretty interesting. So, you know, if you ever see a slow-moving vehicle with county plates, you know, going through town during the warm weather months, look inside, and it could be one of us. So, we do that, and then we also, in the master plans, work with cities on inner intersections, and sometimes road diets and things like that, things that have to do with roadways, that we can share the information with the Department of Public Works so that they can keep an eye on that, particularly if it has to do with a county road. With the Department of Development, Ken's department, we are, they are undergoing a lot of analysis surrounding the topic of opportunity zones. So, we have been doing some research for them, providing them maps of the opportunity zones, and then also narratives of the areas where the opportunity zones are, so that that information can be collected along with other data and information they have as they market these areas for development in the county. The Office of Regional Collaboration, as I had mentioned, I'd been part of a presentation that was made on services offered, and it was, the presentation was made to cities a week or two ago. We're also working with the Office of Regional Collaboration on the Census 2020 Complete Count, and we will be providing maps and also data analysis for them. And we also work with the Department of Public Safety, Office of Emergency Management, and we are in process of producing an annual report for them. They've never had an annual report, so it's been a fun project to work on. So, just a, I probably left a few things out, but I just wanted to give you guys a sense of, of where we are and what we're touching in the county. So, additionally, we do work with other agencies in the region, and this is a picture of a food desert map and supermarket analysis, and this was done by Dan Meany, sitting in the audience, and his GIS team at county planning. So, this was an effort that we worked on with the Board of Health in the city of Cleveland. And we also, and I think you heard this at the last board meeting, a presentation about the Cuyahoga River Water Trail, if not the last meeting, the meeting before that, Eileen Price gave a presentation on that. So, we've been partnering with Cuyahoga Valley National Park Service and other regional partners to make this a reality. So, just a couple more things, and this is some fun stuff, I think Sunny will like this. We do green initiatives, we've never gotten away from that. So, besides doing things like cement and pavement condition analysis for the Department of Public Works, we also try to promote healthy living, such as the Climate Action Plan, and then green initiatives. So, you're going to hear a presentation today from Michael Mears in the audience about the Cuyahoga Greenways Plan. It was a four-year effort that began with TLCI from Noaka. So, it's a great presentation, it's a super exciting topic, it's a way to bring people to jobs and to areas of interest around the county in ways other than using a car. So, they can walk, they can bike, I don't think, you know, necessarily motorized scooters, but that topic came up. Michael and I met with the county executive this morning and presented all this information to him. So, this is hot off the press. The other green initiative, oops, that we work on is, oh, sorry, it's the Green Print Update, and that is, are you guys familiar with that? Yeah, a lot of cities use that for development purposes. It is something that's hosted on our website, and again, Dan's group, the GIS group, and also a cross-section of our green planning group work on that. And so, there's going to be a new software update, and we're working on that. So, it'll be a slightly better green print than what you see now. So, the software update is not fully installed, but in the coming months, you'll, you'll have more features to use, and it should be a little easier to navigate. We also, and it's a good thing Dan came, because everything I'm talking about in terms of the green initiatives touched what Dan does, that we are going to undertake a tree canopy plan update this summer. And so, anybody who has gotten the Arbor Day, the National Arbor Day designation for Tree City USA, is referring to their tree canopy plan in general when they're applying for that designation. So, this will be an updated plan, and so you'll have better information to work with as you decide where to plant trees around your community. So, and then finally, just one last thing, I wanted to let you know that at times, we're famous. We make presentations around the country, and a couple of upcoming presentations that will be happening. One is going to be at the FABOS Conference on Landscape and Greenway Planning, and this is an international conference. It's this year hosted at the University of Massachusetts in Amherst, and Michael Mears is going to make a presentation on the greenway. And so, the same presentation, you see a version of that will be made next month at the University of Massachusetts in Amherst. And Dan will be making a presentation at the National River Rally, River Rally Conference in Cleveland, and this is a national conference for river and water champions, and what Dan is going to be talking about, he'll be giving a demonstration on the county green print and the tree canopy study as it affects water quality improvement. Dan will also be presenting at the Esri International User Conference in San Diego in July, and it's a GIS user conference, and he'll be presenting the food access study. And then, just next week, we will have two of our planners, Micah Stryker, Patrick Hewitt, and I will all be attending the Northeast Ohio Law Directors Association. They are going to, oops, they are going to make a presentation on the master plan process, and so that should be pretty interesting. I talked to Mayor Bobst, she's going to be there. So, Todd Hahn is going to do a presentation on the legalities of land use planning, and that's going to be followed up by our own planners making a presentation on master plans and our process, and how all this integrates. So, we're doing a lot of fun stuff, I just wanted you guys to be aware of it. I wasn't sure how, how long ago it had been since you'd had the recitation of, of everything that we do, but I want you to be proud of us, we have a wonderful staff, super bright people, very hardworking. It's, it's a fun agency, and we do a lot of great work. So, thank you.
Thanks, Susan. That's, I think it's always good to have some more context, especially as we have a new member joining us, a little, get a nice flavor of what the Planning Commission does, and how it can help municipalities around the county. So, with that, I think we can jump back up to our item number two now. Let's get the statutory stuff out of the way. Per, per our bylaws, you know, we are to hold an organizational meeting and elect a chair and vice chair. So, that is what we need to do now, just for, for, right, clearly, I'm the current chair, or, and then Sunny was the, was the vice chair in the last year. So, all it, we just take open nominations for each of the positions, and then a roll call vote. So, I'll open the floor for nominations.
I was going to nominate Ken Serat as chair.
All right. So, I, I, I will accept the nomination, yes, thank you. And now, we do a roll call.
Any other nominations?
Or, I'm sorry, yes, any other nominations? None? I just want to, yes, a majority roll call. Just wanted to verify that. So, we have the nomination of myself as chair, and Jennifer, do you mind doing a roll call vote, please?
Mayor Bobst?
Yes.
Mayor Brennan?
Yes.
Councilperson Brown?
Yes.
Mayor Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Collier? Mayor De Seko?
Yes.
Mayor Gamala?
Yes.
Mayor Sellers?
Yes.
Councilperson Simon?
Yes.
And Mr. Serat?
Yes. I think we had the majority anyway, so, all right, so, thank you. Now, I guess I will entertain nominations for vice chair.
Nominate County Councilwoman Sunny Simon as vice chair.
Second.
We have a nomination as second? Do you accept that? Okay. Do we have any other nominations? All right, hearing none, then, I will ask, turn it over to you, Jennifer, again, for another roll call vote, please, to...
Mayor Bobst? Since you... Mayor Brennan?
Yes.
Councilperson Brown?
Yes.
Mayor Byrne?
Yes.
Mayor De Seko?
Yes.
Mayor Gamala?
Yes.
Mayor Sellers?
Yes.
Councilperson Simon?
Yes.
And Mr. Serat?
Yes. All right. Well, thank you all, happy to serve as your chair again this year. Again, I, just hearing, you know, I think honestly, it's a brief summary of what the work that's done in our County Planning Commission, and honestly, the, there's even more potential. Once we start really kind of weaving these master plans together and these other types of projects, you know, really working to revitalize our, our communities throughout the county, so, thank you.
Yeah, thank you so much. I really enjoyed being on this commission, and was first appointed in 2011 right away, after the new government formed, so we went through changes, we got back down, we had all our seniors here. But I remember before we were doing that again.
Thank you.
Important institution.
Yes.
For those who sit here and the mayors who engage, it's really valuable to the cities, I think, being here, right, mayor, learn so much that maybe we wouldn't otherwise know about what...
Bring back a lot of information to our...
And I think, too, I've said it before, when we have met, the Planning Commission and its impact on each of our communities, everything you mentioned, we have been involved in, the greenways, the green print, we went to training. In fact, we found a sliver of land that made it possible to do an environmental project on a stream that is part of an outfall of our wastewater treatment plan, obviously, a master plan. But that you do it for the entire region, and the support from county council with master plans, there, I, I can't think really of a regional initiative that has the impact that the County Planning Commission has on everything we're doing, to be able to share with us in a, in a synergistic way of what other communities are doing that we can leverage across boundaries, extremely, extremely important. So, great to see so many county agencies. Now to you, bringing, bringing you to the table. And thank you, Susan, for being the senior director of Greenways. It has to be a bit of a challenge. Thank you.
Can I say something?
Sure.
So, I just met with Senior Transportation, it's a nonprofit that provides transportation to seniors, Mayfield especially, you get heavily used there. But they, after the meeting, they told, some of the old timers told me they came to be because of the Planning Commission, and I was surprised by that, that, I don't know why, it just was a strange fit, but see, that's how much more we can get involved. Is, I don't know what you did, a strategic planning for them, or some of it?
That's correct. The County Planning Commission at the time had the planning vision to come up with a program, and so they built it, and then for a short time, we housed staff before they could organize into a 501(c)(3). So, they really, we were kind of a founding entity of that organization.
That was a proud thing.
Just, you know, last point on this, I, I think it's been shared by multiple members about, you know, I really see the, the Planning Commission, it's a nice intersecting point for a lot of the county departments, as well as, you know, other agencies, as Susan mentioned, and as we're, one thing we've discussed is we're completing master plans, is to bring some of these other county departments into that, so that, one, we're aware of what the, what comes out of the plan, and two, so that we can let the municipalities know that we are a resource, whether it be Public Works, whether it be Department of Development, whether it be Sustainability, Regional Collaboration, whatever it is, so that we can help then implement that plan, and help, help it come to fruition, so. So, with that, and no further delay, I think I want to turn it over to Mike, who will do his presentation on the, on the greenways. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you. Thank you for having me. I'm glad to be here, so you've been here two years. Yes. So, I hope you're representing county planning, obviously, you try to do a lot of good work, but there's a lot of, oh, I'm sorry.
Kind of loud, so I don't know if you want me to talk into the microphone? There's a lot of other people involved with this as well, so I'm just kind of the proxy for all the hard work that a lot of other people have put into this outside of just our office. So, just to give you a little background, the project was funded through the Noaka TLCI program. It was building off a plan in 2014 that was called the East Side Greenway Plan, which was about 18 and 19, 19 communities on the east side of Cleveland, that kind of grew through a grassroots effort. After that sort of was complete, the idea was, well, why don't we do this for the whole county? So, the Planning Commission was the primary sponsor for another TLCI application with Metro Parks and others as co-sponsors. We received the grant from Noaka, that was part of the, the primary funding source, we had additional funding from other agencies like Bike Cleveland and the Metro Parks, and then including county planning staff spending time. So, and then from there, Smith Group, WSP and Guide, were our sort of consultants with ourselves, the Metro Parks, and Noaka as like the primary project leadership. So, to give you a little context, obviously, when you think about greenways, you know, the origins, you're tracing back to the Metro Parks, you know, and, and what we think of in terms of our outdoor facilities that we currently have. And 165 of our current sort of trail miles exist within that Emerald Necklace or outside of it. So, obviously, the Metro Parks are a key piece in terms of connectivity and moving people around. And then, you know, the Trust for Public Land did a report in 2018 on the benefits of the Metro Parks, and I suggest you to read it if you haven't. It's amazing the, the, just the, the amount of benefits, economic and health benefits that the Metro Parks provide our region. So, one of the key pieces of plan is thinking, how can we get more people there, how can we leverage those benefits and give more people access to those benefits? And with the Metro Parks sort of, you know, celebrating their 100-year anniversary or centennial in 2017, the idea as part of this plan was, you know, what's the 100, next 100 years look like, and what do we think about connectivity for the next 100 years in our region? So, with that, you know, another context with that sort of piece of connectivity is, you know, our land use and how we've been developing. You know, we have a similar population, and if you look at the map, in 2002 is, as in 1948, but twice as much land area. So, and you can also see how the Metro Parks and... So there's a lot of factors involved in terms of the way we've been developing and the idea of, well, we're also built out. So how can we retrofit a lot of those areas when we, if we're thinking of greenways and the idea of expanding park space, you know, you can see on the map to the left, there's not a lot of room left to think about, you know, sort of in terms of preservation. So how can we retrofit a lot of those areas that have been developed over the past, you know, 50, 60, 70 years? So that just kind of brings us to our purpose. You know, the idea was to just build a strategic plan of the interconnected greenways and what we're calling sort of urban trails, which is that idea of retrofitting some of those more urban or, you know, developed spaces. And then build on that missing, to build on the existing network and kind of fill in all those missing links and where are the gaps in the system? And then repurpose existing corridors to sort of enhance safety and mobility for all users and not just a car. And the idea is what we really want to focus on is a regionally significant network of routes that serves all ages and abilities. You know, what we call it is like the eight to 80, you know, families all the way with kids, all the way up to adults. So our vision statement is, you know, it's an interconnected system that provides recreational opportunities, options for getting around the county, elevating the health of our community and, you know, and especially for the individuals who live here. So our process and our engagement piece with the public was kind of multi-factor. There's a lot of pieces involved. We had the core team, which was us and the consultants and our other group. We had a project team that expanded the group a little bit larger and included a lot of other regional agencies, RTA, Sewer District, you know, Bike Cleveland, West Creek Conservancy, other groups involved in these type of projects. Our steering committee, what we did is we invited a representative from every one of the 59 communities in northeastern Ohio to be a part of the project on the steering committee. And in addition to that, we had a technical team, which kind of expanded the group out a little bit further to include other groups, whether it's ODOT or Rails to Trails or other, you know, people that are involved in kind of trail and greenway planning, whether it be regional or statewide. So we had 11 steering committee meetings, 43 of the 59 communities participated. We had 10 community meetings or public meetings where people were able to come and interact with the plan. We had online surveys, interactive mapping, we did special group presentations, whether it's to a group of CDCs via Neighborhood Progress or other organizations. And then we had a lot of media coverage, you know, we had TV spots, you know, in the paper, you know, we were on national planning websites, local websites, local news, just to try and get people to come out to the meetings, which for us was, whoops, sorry, that was too fast, which for us was really important because one of our key things as part of these workshops and part of online was to try to get community input to shape the vision was to, that's what we, our key goal and our key piece was, was try to get as much input we can from the community. And so that kind of filled out sort of our overarching process, which is we, we called the plan data enriched and kind of community driven. So the data was kind of helped us to inform our decisions, but we didn't want the data to just make the decision. We wanted the community to be a part, a key piece of that. So our first step was to kind of identify the opportunities, you know, where, what opportunities do we have to, you know, put in some potential new facilities? Is that based on a technical analysis from a mapping scenario or is that based on feedback from the community? And then the second piece was, you know, do these routes meet our goals? You know, what are our overall goals for the network? Equity, connectivity, those kind of things. And, you know, the routes that we've identified, whether it's technical input or community input, do those fit our goals? And then, you know, bringing both of those together to kind of come up with what our final plan would be. So we started with candidate routes, you know, this is a map of just existing trails, giving you an idea of where they are and kind of how they're scattered around and you can see how there's gaps in the network and, you know, there's a lot of gray areas there that we'd like to fill in. So then we started with what we call our regional network, which is the idea of how can we fill in those trail gaps throughout the community and what was the best, most logical route that would fulfill that that need and connect those spaces? And that's what gives us what we call our regional network, if you're thinking of it in terms of a hierarchy. And these would be kind of the backbone of the system and facilities that would kind of really strive to fulfill that all ages and all abilities kind of network. And then from there, you know, to sort of increase our coverage and try to think about connecting local destinations and not just sort of regional destinations, the idea we came up with these sort of supporting routes. And these would be kind of your local connections to whether it's your school, your local shopping district, your local downtown, those kind of things. So that way, people could think about the network as not being part of this sort of regional connection piece, but also something that they could use day to day and during their everyday lives. And the idea is that the local piece can give you that day to day activity and if you can get on the local network, then you could potentially use that to get on the regional network and go across municipalities, those kind of things. So then we had overall framework, it's about 815 miles. You know, we only have 122 miles of existing trail and then 63 miles of existing trail based on those hierarchy of regional and sort of supporting network. And then some of these are, you know, we liked them to be a trail, but a lot of times, you know, based on the fact that we are urban environment, you know, that they would have to be on street. So there's some, you know, potential there of both off-street and on-street facilities. Whoops. So then how do we figure out which ones we should do? I mean, obviously, that's a lot of, a lot of routes. So what we did is we went through that whole process, figured out those candidate routes and then came up with our analysis. And again, like I said before, the analysis was kind of to draw attention to where we think areas of opportunity are. And we wanted to use this to kind of inform, help inform our decisions. So just an example, what we did is we took the whole county and we broke it down into a quarter mile grid. And this is an example of what we did, if you were thinking about what routes would, for in terms of populated, population density, so what routes would impact the most people? So this is a map of the population density throughout Cuyahoga County and the routes in red are the routes that we proposed that would score in the top 20% for, you know, population impact. So those are the most densely populated areas and those routes would serve the most people just in terms of population density. So we did that analysis for multiple factors across the whole entire county. We did every route based on its access to trails, its access to parks, habitat expansion, socionomic factors, personal mobility factor, you know, car ownership, transit, job centers factors, and then commercial civic factors. So all the routes that scored in the top 20% of each one of those data inputs were scored. And then what we did is we came up with additional sort of hybrid connections with the idea is, well, what if we took a route that was the highly densely populated area and a route that, you know, is a connection to a highly job populated area? So the idea is we took these sort of hybrid analysis to see, what are the best routes to connect people to jobs? What are the best routes to connect people to parks? Jobs to transit or parks to habitat? Those kind of things is kind of a way to take that analysis and look at it a little bit further. So if I really wanted a route that took a densely populated area to a densely job-centered area, this would be the route that we would use. So we kind of took all those in, did a composite, figured out which routes show up the most in terms of all those different factors and kind of, you know, filtered through that and came up with a map of the routes that score the highest and what we're considering our data analysis. So the results from that and then how we figure we're going to get this done are kind of twofold. One, what we did is, all right, so we have 312 projects in the network and then we took all that analysis and took that input from the community to sort of help us identify what our strategic projects are. So it's input from the public, input from local steering committee, project team review, and then that technical evaluation that I just talked about. And that gave us what we're calling our prioritization plan. And so we've taken those 300, you know, different candidate routes and broke it down into 69 projects, which is about 243 miles. 12 of those projects are, we're calling like critical gaps, which are small gaps in kind of the existing trail network where you may have two existing trails that kind of have a one-mile gap in the middle between the two of them and, you know, the idea of trying to fill that gap. Regional links are sort of, you know, big, regional impactful, you know, trails or projects. Obviously, something along the lakefront would be a regional impact, but, you know, things like that would cross jurisdictions, maybe have, you know, two or three different municipalities impacted. And then key supporting routes are those idea of those like local supporting routes that again would provide a lot of benefits, whether it's for areas that don't have good park access, maybe not good trail access, or maybe they provide really good transit access. So we kind of broke it down into those different groups as a way to sort of prioritize those 300 routes into 69 different projects across the county. And the plan, what we, the way we think about it is we think it's flexible. You know, we think about is it should just be used as a guide. And what it is, is to highlight what we're thinking are notable connections, you know, within that kind of overall framework. And what we've done is we've aligned our recommendations with, you know, previous plans and partners involved in previous projects. We identify where maybe a project would be in its phase, you know, is it, is it something we've identified first or has it something that maybe it's been studied two or three different times and it's ready to move on to the next phase? And then also the idea is helping with resource allocation, you know, maybe two or three projects, you know, now they're sort of on this over wide county wide map, you know, maybe they can be bundled together, you know, as kind of a joint project, you know, in, for multiple communities and kind of making that connection through, you know, applying with projects with more than just a single segment. And the idea here is that, again, for the thoughts in terms of all ages and all abilities, you know, this is the group that we're most, you know, concerned with, you know, like this kind of 50% that are interested about using bike facilities, but they would prefer probably to ride on the sidewalk than in the street. So and that's kind of what we stress, the idea with this network, we would like to, at the highest extent possible, build facilities that are all ages and all abilities, whether that's protected within the street, designated bike lanes or off-street in terms of like an all-purpose trail or a side path. So again, one of the things, because of the way, you know, we would like to build all ages and all, all ages and all abilities facilities and because of the diverse sort of environment we have throughout the county, both urban and suburban, you know, there's not one size all fits solution. You know, it's going to take a lot of context sensitive design for a lot of these corridors and what fits best with not only the community's needs and desires, but what fits best with the existing infrastructure. So coordination is obviously going to be key. And this plan, one of the great things is with all the different regional groups involved, we've had a lot of coordination and dialogue back and forth. And one example from our organization that we can do is we can take this plan now and go to individual communities during the master plan process and further vet some of these routes through public engagement, through engagement with the local community at a deeper level and find out what the community is capable of, what they would like, or is there alternatives? You know, like I said, it's flexible. So maybe a route we suggested, when you get into a real deeper dive, isn't the best one. Maybe it's two streets over, maybe it's kind of a little, takes a little jog, something along those lines, and we're okay with that. We, you know, the plan is meant to work that way. We trying to want to work with the communities and find out which opportunities work best for them. So then addition to that, we have a group that kind of started a lot of this back in 2014. They started as the Trails Leadership Network and then they actually changed their name to the Cuyahoga Greenways Partners, in perfect timing. So they're kind of a collaborative, a lot of regional organizations and they meet, you know, sort of quarterly and kind of go over and sort of keep, continue that dialogue in terms of what's happening with trails and bike implementation throughout the county and kind of continue that dialogue in terms of advocacy and collaboration and what, what potential projects, you know, we could get done. And then lastly, I'll mention is a lot of existing things or a lot of resources that you would may think would be the first step to do as part of plan completion have sort of already been completed or within the works and during the process. Obviously, we came up with a logo and a branding piece and people are pretty familiar with it throughout the process and seen it. We've gotten a lot of media and a lot of feedback and positive feedback, both local and nationally through that. We've won awards, we've presented at conferences, so there's been a lot of momentum from that. And then again, with the, all the different project partners involved, you know, it helps, you know, in terms of continuing the project forward. And then even with that, you know, Destination Cleveland and other partners have been working on a signage and wayfinding piece for the sort of Cleveland Lakefront Bikeway that connects West 25th to Edgewater. And one of the pieces as part of that signage was, you know, how can we potentially use that to have it expand, not just for that trail, but be something that could be utilized, whether it's via the tow path trail or other trails throughout the county, so we could kind of come up with a consistent signage and wayfinding message? So that all people, as they use this network, you know, they, they think about it as part of one larger whole and it's not just individual trails, but they're part of this larger greenway system that we're developing. Not only for our local needs and local user, but then also for a tourist or somebody who's visiting Cleveland or the region for the first time would see each one of these great routes that people have done as part of this kind of larger network. And with that, I'll just let you know that if we did just build just the regional network and went from 122 miles to 290 regional miles, we double the amount of people that would be within one mile of a regional trail to about half a million. And then we would also almost double the amount of jobs that would be within one mile of a regional trail. So just to give you the idea of people could access the trail not only for recreation and health purposes, but then potentially also for job access as well. So, thank you very much.
Thanks, Mike. Any questions or comments on the plan? That looks great. I'm really excited to see this come to fruition, so thank you for all your work.
Thank you.
Exciting. Thank you.
All right. Next up, Jennifer's gonna talk a little bit about our financials.
Well, good afternoon, everyone. I'm Jennifer Karaf. I'm the fiscal officer for the County Planning Commission. And I don't typically come and report at first quarter of the new year and give a detailed financial report, especially because I just did this in December. But knowing it's an organizing meeting and I have some new faces here, I thought it was important to come back to you. County Council, they do originally pass a two-year operating budget and it was for 2018 and 2019 and it included a total fixed county operating subsidy for our agency of $1.3 million. That was comprised originally of two different sources of funds for each year, about $800,000 from the county general fund account and about a half a million dollars each year, a total of $1 million, from the road and bridge fund, which primarily finances the Department of Public Works activity. But the rationale was being, planning is considered an eligible activity under road and bridge fund and when you interpret the use of those funds in the Ohio Revised Code. So we went with it. And last year, our budget was built with those two subsidies and we worked very closely with the Department of Public Works to draw down charges for planning-related road and bridge activities, things like trails planning that were already included in master plans that we were working on. But we also did some additional services to justify the use of those funds. I think Susan mentioned the pavement roadway condition ratings. We also did some capital improvement mapping, so very relevant. And it was originally on our books to continue. However, this year, our budget was revised to be fully funded by the general fund subsidy and they've removed that obligation of the road and bridge fund. All things equal, though, it did not change our total operating budget or revenue expectation. We were still tasked to bring in over $410,000 in outside revenues and our total budget is approved at over $1.7 million. We closed 2008 with a little over $150,000 in outside revenue, which was a drop from the previous year's collections and about two-thirds less than our expected revenue goal. But we were able to offset our total operating budget last year with some miscellaneous revenue and a one-time transfer in that totaled about $160,000 so that we could end the year with only about 24% less than our original 2018 expectations. We closed with about $313,000 and we closed the year at less than our original at $1.6 million for an operating budget. Here's a look at our outside revenue collections over the past few years. It's seven full years and the darker shaded areas of that graph show since 2013 what our outside revenue collections really have been. We had been averaging about 20% of our operating budget and it was trending upward, but you do see that in 2018, we didn't really meet that goal. In terms of our current budget year, our 2019 total expenditures are budgeted at about $1.825 million and salaries and those commensurate benefits are our single largest expense. They typically comprise about 90% of our budget and that's typical since we see ourselves as a consulting agency. It's our people as our highest expense. But similar to last year, we will likely end this year below our overall budget appropriation. And we're already expecting that we'll have a salary savings because of Glenn's departure, but also due to unfilled plan or bacon. $1.825 million, and salaries and those commensurate benefits are our single largest expense. They typically comprise about 90% of our budget, and that's typical since we see ourselves as a consulting agency. It's our people as our highest expense. But similar to last year, we will likely end this year below our overall budget appropriation. And we're already expecting that we'll have a salary savings because of Glenn's departure, but also due to unfilled planner vacancies, and we have on the books an administrative support that's budgeted for but not yet filled. So looking ahead, the county is starting budget preparations and talks earlier than they have in any previous budget years. In fact, OBM is hosting a budget kickoff meeting tomorrow, so very timely. Here's the general, the view, is that the county is projecting a budget shortfall. And there's a number of reasons for this. It's due largely, though, to a loss of Stale's tax from how Medicaid managed care organizations had been taxed. There's also increased health and human services costs with the opiate epidemic. But also countywide people, it's the human capital, and so there's been increases in total personnel costs that have raised overall budget costs. So while there is some uncertainty about our budget, if they're projecting shortfalls, deficits, and cuts, we're not sure. We'll find out more tomorrow. But I think overall that our agency has been able to demonstrate its worth, and that we will continue to operate with a fixed rather than the calculated General Fund subsidy, and that that subsidy will likely remain as General Fund. And that as well, our agency will continue to seek revenue generating contracts to be able to offset our operating budget, of which I feel like Susan is already forging and renewing relationships with our member communities, and already strategizing about how we rein in costs and add value. I'd also like the board to know, I guess from a staff perspective, what a great job Susan really is doing as our interim director. There's a collective sense of calm and confidence in her in this very uncertain time, so for what that's worth. And as well, I've been with the County Planning Commission for over 20 years, and I can say I'm very impressed with her ability to lead. I feel like she's engaging and responsive, she's fair and honest, and also she has great integrity, so all great qualities of a true leader. So, thank you. Are there any questions about the budget?
Good job. You always do a good job.
Thank you.
So, I know for the first time that we had subsidized from our Public Works Department Fund, and is that why you were handling these road projects? Would you not have otherwise been doing that? Are we going to continue to do that if we're not going to get that particular subsidy?
I'll let Susan speak to that.
Last year was the first time that we became involved with the pavement condition ratings report, and it's kind of funny among the staff that the person who was assigned to lead that project is the same person who was one of our green space planners. So as a gag gift to Christmas, we had a gift exchange, and I found at a craft fair somebody who made cement letters of the alphabet, and I gave her her initials in cement, because I thought it was hilarious that the person who was a very green woman, she used to work at the Natural History Museum and, you know, has a master's degree in everything that has to do with nature, is now principally our, I call her the cement woman. She manages the, one thing that I forgot to mention, and there were a lot of things I forgot to mention in terms of what our agency does, we are the local administrator for the Ohio Public Works Commission funds that are allocated for capital improvement projects, it's the skip program, and for Clean Ohio Funds. And she is the person who manages that program for our district, and our district happens to encompass the entire area of Kiahoke County. And so, we were already involved in some capital programs. She happened to be the person who took on that program when Claire Kilbane retired. The pavement condition ratings was a request from the Public Works Department, and so Allison, because she had some familiarity already with the skip program and the review of capital project requests that had to do with roads and bridges and sewer and septic wastewater treatment plants, volunteered to kind of lead that project. And she got training, as did Dan and I think Jim Sonhalter, but principally it was Allison, and we had some summer interns assigned to that project. It actually was very valuable in terms of her management of the skip program for OPWC. The transfer of information was, like I said, it was just invaluable. She learned a lot. So, the evaluation committee for skip funds and Clean Ohio Funds are actually, for skip it's engineers, and Allison is the person in the room who is the administrator, but she has learned a lot of, about engineering. So she is able to provide valuable input to that evaluation process. So to answer your question, that was a new project. She's actually looking forward to doing it again. And just the other day, she had scheduled herself and myself for Tim's training, so that you can, we could learn about crash data that's supplied by the state. So, it's not, although you would think it sounds like it's unrelated to what the County Planning Commission would normally do, the fact that it provides information based on a countywide assessment of roads back to the Public Works Department, it has really pulled the planning team a lot closer to the Public Works staff, which in terms of synergies and working relationships is a great thing.
So after, thank you. After we're done getting the subsidy from Public Works, will we continue to do, isn't it the road ratings, even without that connection? That we were mandated, really, we had to connect the dots before, so it looks like we're not going to have to connect those dots.
No, but we're, I talked to Michael Dever, and I said that we're happy to continue that, and as Jennifer had said, we do a lot of trail planning through the Greenways Plan, and then also through master plans. Not so much that we're working with cities saying that, you know, we'll design your trails, but every time we're in a community, like last week we were in Woodmere, and Orange Village had done a recreational trails plan, and the people in Woodmere were very encouraged by the development in Orange, and also the information from the Greenways Plan that showed how they could connect to what Orange had done. And so, the connecting of those dots through the Greenways Plan is something that at times we can charge back, or we were charging back to Public Works, to kind of show that we were actually utilizing the money for their benefit. But the benefit was much larger than just a direct benefit to Public Works. It applied to multiple communities, it advances the Greenways Plan, so there were some benefits that you wouldn't have thought initially we would find.
Any other questions for Jennifer?
I noticed that, and you mentioned that there's a, there was a decrease in the charges for services revenue compared to what was budgeted. What accounts for that, and are we expecting that to continue into 2019 at all?
Well, a large explanation for why our revenue collections were down last year was from the Road and Bridge Fund obligation. So Glenn and I did strategize with Michael Dever and those at Public Works to drum up what were our existing projects that we could build back to, but also to brainstorm new projects for them. And it included like Homestead Township sidewalk analysis, which benefited the township. We might not have otherwise done that, but because of this. So, it sort of was at the expense of generating new income revenue projects, trying to work more closely with them. But as well, I think we're also seeing that we're in year four of offering our master planning grants assistance, and we've awarded a lot of master plans. And so, we feel that the pool of applicants, because it did have some rigorous eligibility, the pool of applicants is getting smaller, so that may have also strained our ability to reach out and generate new, new projects.
Okay, thank you.
And I can add on to that a little bit. Ken and I, behind the scenes, have been talking to various communities that have recently had master plans completed in their community or will soon be completed. And I'm arranging meetings with those communities, because what we find when we do a master plan is that there are often other things discovered, such as a zoning code from 1960 or '50. And it's an opportunity for our agency to showcase our abilities and our range of services. And so, sold the right way, this may well be a way to generate revenue for the agency. We were approached as a result of one of the master plans about developing a recreation plan for that community, and so we're in process of developing that proposal. And even last year, when I first began working for the agency in June, I was developing proposals for potential work. So, although some of our time allotted to work efforts was diverted through some of the Public Works projects, they were great learning opportunities, but it didn't necessarily stop us from knowing that we needed to market our services and maybe do active salesmanship. And so, we have plans this year, and the meetings are set up, and a lot of that, thank you to Ken, because Ken and I go to meetings, we're not always at the same meetings, but he is a great salesman for this agency and for the board. And so, we've been talking about that, and as we meet with these cities and introduce them through their master plan to the appropriate county departments that can actually provide services to them, whether it's help with grants or public safety advice, we can also pop in there as Planning Commission and say, you know, we do plans for this and this and, you know. One other thing I forgot to mention, and maybe this would have been better explained had I not forgotten, but as I was talking about the master plans, what's finishing up, what's in process, what's just starting, I failed to mention that our 2019 program is going to be underway in the next several weeks, and I will be sending notices to all mayors by email and by letter to let them know that there is again another $150,000 that's allocated in our budget for doing planning. But it's not going to be limited to only master plans. We're going to offer to communities that if they want to have a master plan, or a zoning update, or a corridor study, or a recreation plan, or whatever they can think of that would benefit them, to apply for the funding. There'll be a review committee that will determine how many of these we can do within that dollar amount. We have found through analysis that sometimes we exceed our initial dollar amount on some of these planning projects, so I think we have a bit of a better handle on that. I think that we've also noticed that sometimes we, we charge for services and our estimate for the charge is, falls short of what the actual cost is, so the, that was kind of two sides of the same coin, that explanation I just gave. But I think, you know, we're aware of that, and we're paying closer attention to the charges for our services, and also making sure that we're a little more careful about our estimation on hours of work. So it could be that the $150,000 that we have to work with could do a couple of master plans, or it could do more things, depending on what comes in. So, if something comes in and it's a corridor study, and it's not something that's really expensive in our estimation, we may be able to do three or four things. So we're waiting to unveil that and then see what comes in. And we're kind of excited, because we want communities in the county to realize that we can offer more services than just master plans, and that there is still some money available. And the other thing to never forget about our agency, when we do master plans, we always put at the back of the master plan, grant information. We are constantly revising that. So if anybody has a question about, you know, I've, you know, the one thing that I found out that was very interesting to me when I was doing research about grants last summer, was a coastal community such as Rocky River, it's really interesting, there's actually a lot of money available. You know, you have to fit the peg into the right size hole, but there is a lot of grant money available, it's a matter of just asking for it the right way. So, you know, we're excited, we really, really have a lot to offer. And so my, as interim, you know, as I keep coming to these meetings, I'll try to keep you aware of what we're doing and things that, that will help you in your community's operation, and that's really why we're here. We're here to make the world a better place, and certainly our region. Not long before Glenn left, it was after our master plan had been completed, and by the way, a lot of compliments on our master plan, I'll explain that in a second. So, a couple of things, I had asked him, now that we're finished, we do see an opportunity for an updating of our zoning classifications, an update of permitted uses as they relate back to the master plan. And so we were asking for, you know, proposals for what it would be to have, because I felt that the Planning Commission, you have this incredible expertise, but with this, this regional vision, which is very helpful to us. I did take a step several weeks ago, and continuing to work on it, to develop an economic development strategic plan with the master plan, and as those potential consultants have been looking at it, I didn't think about the Planning Commission perhaps doing that work, there were two or one compliments about the thoroughness, the specificity of our master plan that was completed by county planning. So again, compliments to, to all of you. So a couple of things, we paid for an additional survey. I think there are things in terms of a menu that, okay, we're going to fund your master plan, but if you'd like to do a survey, and there was, there was a survey we were going to do, but we wanted to expand that, we thought if we're reaching out to our residents, let's add other components about recreation and services and things like that. And so, we, we paid additional dollars for that, and I think if there are menus of things, those can be very complimentary to the core project. And I would love to work with you on some coastal management things, as County Councilwoman Simon knows, we, we have great interest in that, so that's good to hear. But I think developing, I'm so happy to hear, these other sort of ancillary projects that could be quite powerful, that you want to be involved in. Thank you. Thank you. And that was why, when I, I mentioned which presentations staff will be at and giving, besides the conferences, you know, there are things like the Law Directors Association that reached out to us, so we recognize some marketing opportunities as they're presented, and then we continue to, to look for them and let agencies, folks know that we are, we are out there and we're available.
All right. Thank you, Jennifer.
Thank you.
Just going back to our agenda, we don't have any oil business. I asked if there's any new business to bring forward. Okay, none noted? So, Jennifer, has anyone signed in for a public comment?
No.
Okay. So, with that, actually we'll ask that we go into executive session, this to speak a little bit more detail about the executive or director role. So, I'll, at this point, ask for staff to excuse themselves for a bit while we do this.
We need a roll call.
Oh, we need a roll call, sorry.
We need a motion.
Oh, yes, a motion, sorry, and a motion.
Yes.
We have a motion and a second, and now a roll call vote, so we're going to executive session.
Mayor Bobbs?
Yes.
Mayor Brennan?
Yes.
Councilperson Brown?
Yes.
Mayor Byrne?
Yes.
Mayor DeSacco?
Yes.
Mayor Gamala?
Yes.
Mayor Sellers?
Yes.
Councilperson Simon?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.[1783.72]